I hereby call this work session to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first order of business, we have Hermes Awards Gold Winners, our Navigate PTC app, and our sponsorship packet. Welcome to the podium, Vivian Lett.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody.
Yeah.
Right at the perfect height. I hope everyone is awake. I hear my face. Just want to make sure everyone was awake and here. Okay, so, on behalf of the Public Communications Team, Mayor and Council, I am pleased to share that Peachtree City has been honored at the 2025 Hermes Creative Awards, which is one of the world's most competitive and respected creative competitions. All right. So, in its 19th year, this international awards program receives thousands of entries from leading nonprofits, universities, local and county governments across the United States, and global design firms. Submissions are judged across categories, including print media, digital media, and interactive media, such as social media, web apps, mobile apps, et cetera. So with that, Peachtree City, we submitted four entries this year, and I am delighted to say that all four entries were recognized. The city received two gold awards and two honorable mentions. So when we're talking about the gold awards, very exciting. The first entry was our Recreation and Special Events sponsorship packet, which is available on print as well as online through our website. This packet is given to local businesses, community members, for opportunities to support the amazing events that our Recreation and Special Events team hosts, such as the Fall Festival, Kids to Park Day, et cetera. The next item that had received the gold award is our Navigate PTC app. With this interactive app, which is constantly developing, as many of you know, as well as the community, this is an opportunity where not only will you receive guidance as far as directions on the multi-use path, but it also gives you an idea of local eateries, the opportunity to connect with loved ones through pens and whatnot, and it gives you the opportunity to report issues that you may see, especially with the recent storms, you know, fallen trees, stormwater overflow, et cetera. So it's a very handy app, and the Hermes Creative Awards really like the design and acknowledge that through the award. The two other entries that we had submitted, which received the honorable mentions, one is going to be our Multi-Use Path brochure, which of course is available through print as well as through digital on our website. As you know, it gives guidance as far as, you know, safety, regulations, protocols when using the multi-use path. And of course, the last, but not least, is a video submission that we had created, which talks about asking for help. As you will see here, this is a representative from both fire and police, which is appropriate for this time of year. This is National PTSD Month. And basically, we're sharing the message that it is okay to ask for help. So at this time, I'd like to share a brief, you know, I'd like to play it so our audience could take a look at what was created.
You see us in uniforms, responding to emergencies, keeping the peace.
You might think that we have it all figured out, that we're immune to the pressures of life.
But the truth is, even facing flames and danger, we face internal battles too.
The weight of the world can feel so heavy, even on our shoulders.
We all have our stories, our struggles, our moments of feeling lost, and that's okay. Asking for help isn't a weakness, it's strength. Reaching out shows courage.
It shows that you care about yourself and those around you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we want you to know this. You're not alone. We stand together as first responders and as a community.
Over the next few weeks, we'll be sharing resources and tips on being mental health aware.
Remember, you're not alone.
We're in this together.
And together, we can build a community of support, understanding, and hope.
So Mayor and Council, these awards reflect the creativity, professionalism, collaboration, and teamwork of our public communications team, along with collaboration with city staff. I'm sure you all will join me in congratulating those involved in this outstanding achievement. At this time, at this time, I would like to ask Mayor and Council, along with the city manager and the public communications team, to come down for a quick photo.
Thank you. All right, where do you want us? In, in, in.
Can you scoot it? If everyone's gonna scoot it out.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I wanted to be so...
More scoot.
Now you're gonna make it.
Now, now you gotta scoot more. Take like two regular sides. Everyone take two regular sides.
If you're trying to get us out of here.
You know, there's a dance a lot like this. I do it on cruise ships.
Our intern, Alexa. We have enjoyed an award-winning communications team on a number of fronts. I couldn't be more excited and proud, and we really are getting the word out in Peachtree City. Thank you, Vivian, for a wonderful job. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Welcome David Erwin of Malden and Jenkins to the microphone. Good morning, David. If you speak up, we will.
Okay. All right, well, good morning, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Erwin, and I'm with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the city's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this morning to discuss the results of this year's audit. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent audits report. Talk about the results of the two compliance reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit. Hit a few of the financial statement highlights. Discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate with you all. And then last but not least, to answer any questions that you all have. Now, the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of city's management and members of the council. As your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conducted our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards. And I've had to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. And this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we provide as your external auditor. What this means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted consequences. As part of the audit, again, there are two compliance reports that we also issue. The first is the Single Audit Report. A single audit is a compliance report that is required when an entity has or spends over $750,000 of federal funds. You all had around $1.9 million of federal expenditures this year, almost all of which pertain to the ARBA funds that you all received. As was the case of the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on your single audits as well. The second compliance report is called the Yellow Book Report. The Yellow Book Report is a report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm happy to say that we do not have any audit findings reported for what this year mean. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the audit, in your internal control during our audit. And, you know, as I've mentioned you all before, with all the new accounting standards that are being implemented this year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all the more present for you all in audit, not only has a clean opinion, but no audit findings. So again, that's certainly something you all should be proud of. And to me, it's really a testament to the hard work done by your staff, you know. You know, when a government has transitions in leadership, employees taking on new or additional roles, as you all have had, you know, it's not uncommon for us to see cracks through the audit process, through the internal control process, or even a delay in the audit itself. We saw none of that this year. And again, I really think that's just a testament to your leadership and the hard work done by your staff. They did a great job this year. Kelly Dust and the entire finance department, very accommodating our audit team, worked hard to address our questions and give us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized on time. And I believe I mentioned this last year, but one thing I really appreciate about this city is you all are proactive, not reactive. If something comes up during the year that Dust or Kelly have a question about, they go ahead and call me, email me. Let's go ahead and get these questions or issues addressed on the front end and not wait until the audit starts to address these questions. You know, that proactive communication throughout in here really contributes to a smooth and timely audit. So again, just want to thank your staff for all their hard work this year, and we certainly appreciate the work with it. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. Again, you all prepared what's called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an ACF. An ACF require, an ACF requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as the GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. They have their professional staff, as well as a special review committee that looks at this document. And when they look at the city's ACF, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the city. What they want to do is make sure that the necessary information is in this report so the readers of your financial statements can do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA has once again awarded the city the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, FDY 23, and that certificate is included in this year's document. And as you can see on the slide, I believe this is the 36th year in a row that you all have received this certificate. So again, this is an impressive document. It's one that you all should be proud of. And again, it's just, to me, it's another example of you all going above and beyond and continuing to raise the bar with regards to transparency in financial reporting. So again, hats off to you all on that. As you look at your financial statements, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the NDNA. In your financial statements, it starts on page five. It's right after our audit opinion. I strongly encourage everyone to read the NDNA. The purpose of the NDNA is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements. And it does this by providing a narrative explanation of your financial statements to a management's perspective. So, you know, if you have a question about anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, you know, any fluctuations in financial activity as it relates to prior year, oftentimes you can find your management in the NDNA. So, you know, considering that your ACF is 150 pages long, reading the NDNA is a really great way to get a concise and logical summary of the city's financial statements. So again, I would strongly encourage everyone to read that section of your financial statements. Okay, the city's basic financial statements are broken down into three components, the first of which are the government-wide statements. The government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in private sector business. You have two columns in this section, the government activities and your business-type activities. So all the funds of the city are combined into one or two of these columns, depending on the nature of that firm. And we have a slide here. We have a slide here that summarizes the city's financial activity from the government-wide perspective. And again, this includes all the city's funds as well as the water sewage authority. But, you know, again, as you can see here, city ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources of around $271 million. Of that amount, around $157.5 million are your capital assets. That accumulate appreciated. Again, when I talk about capital assets, that's land, buildings, machinery, equipment that's owned by the city. You all also had about $93.3 million in cash and investments as of year-end. Look at your liabilities in total and deferred inflows of resources. They were around $58.8 million for the year. Of that amount, around $32.6 million are long-term donations. I mean, they're not, these are liabilities that are not owed in the next fiscal year. Revenues were around $90.3 million. That's an increase of about $9.3 million compared to FDY 23. Look at your expenses. They were right at $79 million. That's around a $5.7 million increase compared to prior year. So this resulted in an ending net position of approximately $212.2 million, and that's an increase of about $11.4 million. To break that down a little bit further, of that $11.4 million increase, about $4.4 million came from your business-type activities, with the remaining seven coming from your government activities. And the majority of that increase to your government activities is an increase in your gross revenues. So again, all in all, a good year for the city from an entity-wide perspective. Your net position increased by about 6%. And, you know, that's a positive indicator of overall, you know, good financial balance. So the city continues to maintain a solid balance sheet. It remains in good, liquid financial position. I mean, you have sufficient current assets to meet your short-term obligations. So again, overall, the city's in good financial shape. The second component of your financial statements are the fund-level statements. Again, this is what you typically see throughout the year. The fund-level statements, they focus, they focus on individual parts of the government and report the city's funds in more detail than that of the entity-wide. And, you know, of all the funds that you all have, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is the general fund. Again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city. It's where the majority of your revenues proceed and funds expended. But we have a chart here that shows the general fund's revenues for the year. Total revenues around $53.9 million. That's around a $5 million increase compared to prior year. You know, obviously taxes are the big revenue driver there, as it is for all the governments. It was around $44 million. That's around, that accounts for around 82% of your general fund revenues. And you know, when you talk about taxes, that's everything. There's property taxes, sales and use taxes, business taxes, et cetera. Couple more revenue lines worth mentioning. You also had $3.4 million in charges and services and $2 million in licenses and permits for the year. This next chart presents the general fund's expenditures for the year by function. Total expenditures around $46.7 million. That's about a $6.2 million increase compared to prior year. So again, while your revenues in your general fund increased by $5 million, it was more than offset by a $6.2 million increase in your expenditures. But to break that down a little bit, you know, once again, no surprise, public safety is a significant expense, again, as it is for all governments, mostly, for most all governments. Public safety expenses were around $23.7 million, and that accounted for a little over half of the general fund's total expenditures. In addition, you all have public works expenditures of around $4.8 million and general government expenditures of approximately $10 million for the year. So when you factor in other financing sources and uses such as transfers to and from other funds and the sale of capital assets, the general fund's fund balance had a slight decrease this year of around $73,000 for ending balance of $33.9. So I say it's a decrease, but, you know, relative to the speed, it was flat for the year. And this next chart, it shows the fund balance history of the general fund over the past five years. And to me, charts like this are always interesting to, you know, to kind of see where you were compared to where things currently stand. And again, as you can see on this chart, even though fund balance slightly decreased this year, overall, you all have done a really good job of continuing to increase your fund balance over the past five years. So it's impressive to see how you all have consistently been able to stay within budget and continue to increase your fund balance. So again, that's certainly something that council, management, and really everyone involved in the city should be proud of and committed to. And, you know, when I talk about fund balance, you know, one thing I always like to remind people, fund balance is what you all have in the form of cash, discretionary spending. Fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities. And, you know, we have a chart here that further explains the different classifications of fund balance. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the general fund's total fund balance ended around $33.9 million. Of that amount, a little over half a million is in non-sustainable. These are inventory assets, prepaid expenditures, et cetera.
You called that non-what?
Non-sustainable. And inventory is a non-sustainable asset. Another $1.1 million is assigned, meaning it's already intended or reserved for a specific purpose. In this case, subsequent year's budget. So that leaves around $33 million as unassigned fund balance that's available for general use. And, you know, another thing to keep in mind, you know, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately $3.9 million per month. So you all ended the year with an unassigned fund balance equal to around eight and a half months worth of operating expenditures. So again, that's a strong fund balance, especially for an entity with September 30th year-end. So that's sort of something that you all should be proud of. You know, to further that thought, you know, a question I'm often asked, you know, as long as we're able to pay our current obligations, what's the benefit of having a strong fund balance? And again, there are several reasons for this, one of which I just mentioned. Again, property taxes are a significant revenue source for you all, and they're cyclical in nature. So having a strong fund balance provides you all the cash flows necessary to cover expenditures during months when revenues are lower than they are at other times of the year. Other reasons, you know, to cover significant emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. It provides you all the flexibility to fund one-time capital purchases or for discretionary spending. There's a potential for better interest rates when you all issue debt to give and save you all money. And, you know, this, that last bullet is maybe the most important. It's important in uncertain economic times. And we've seen that, we've lived through it, you know, from the financial crisis of 2008, 2009, to the global pandemic of 2020, to weather-related issues that unfortunately sometimes we have to deal with here in the South. If I'm in your shoes, it's comforting to know that you all have a strong fund balance to withstand such events. So again, that's certainly something that you all should be proud of. A couple other funds I want to briefly mention are your four enterprise funds, which again is your stormwater and your water supply, and your amphitheater funds. Again, enterprise funds are used to account for operations similar to that of private sector business. The purpose of these funds are to be self-sufficient, not to have to rely on other funds to cover their operations. So to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. So as you can see on this chart, all three of those funds continue to do that. All three of these funds had operating income during the year. They all generated positive operating cash flows, and all three of these funds are overall a good type of financial. So again, that's certainly what you will see at your, at your, your funds and loans. One final item to discuss is just certain information that the auditing standards requires and we communicate with you all. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we are issuing a clean opinion with no audit findings. We received full cooperation from management staff. There were no disagreements with management that affected the financial statements. There were no significant issues discussed with management that would affect the financial statements. We are, we had no uncorrected mistakes. And again, we are independent of the city as required by the auditing standards. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Again, you know, there's a lot of information in your financial statements. What I tried to do is just briefly hit the highlights of what I think is the most important for you all. But I do want to thank your staff again for all their hard work and for another successful audit. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Thank you so much. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you to our staff. I know we had a switch in our Director of Finance this year, and it's no surprise to me that Kelly has led this team to this audit. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Mr. Holland, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I noticed during the report, first of all, thank you. Great report. Thank you for working with us and dealing with all of the issues along the way. And communication has been great from my, best of my understanding. The question I have is, I noticed that you had in there that everything is GAAP. How you do your work. And I thought that the government used GASB. Is there some difference between the two that you might be able to explain why we're using GAAP instead of GASB?
GAAP is generally accepted.
Right, right.
These are in accordance with GAAP.
Okay.
But the standards that we follow are generally accepted, are GASB standards.
GASB, okay. So the standards you're following is GASB, but the actual accounting is GAAP. Thank you. That answered that question.
Any other questions? To Counsel Member Johnson's point, a major shift in personnel this year, and I want to commend our city manager, Justin Strickland, our CFO, Kelly Bush, and Dustin Fallon. Please join me in thanking them. Yeah, thank you. I didn't know an annual comprehensive financial report could be so joyful. Awesome. Yeah, thank you, David. Public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have. Yes, Mayor, we have four people signed up to speak. First person is Tim Eden.
Hello.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Mayor, the council members. I know your time is very valuable, so I'll keep my comments short. First to introduce myself, my name is Tim Eden, and my wife, two kids, and I, we live in the Coventry neighborhood here in Peachtree City. I'm a certified public accountant, so I was probably one of the few that really enjoyed that presentation. But I also have an MBA from the University of Georgia. I started my career actually working in government for the state of Georgia, specifically for the Department of Audits. So I'm kind of familiar with those type of audits as well. But I spent most of my career working for large international companies doing various controllership and finance-type roles. But the past couple of years, I've actually had the privilege to work for a family-owned company here in the area. But anyway, enough about me. What I really wanted to talk about is, my family and I, over the years that we've lived here, have really fallen in love with Peachtree City. It is such an amazing environment, not only just physically, but just the people and the community are just amazing. We really do call this our home, not only now, but we really want to call this our home the rest of our lives. You know, a place to raise our family and to just be engaged in community and eventually retire here. So all that being said, you know, I've been really, feel like it's been encouraged inside of me to really want to see what I can do to just leverage the gifts that I have to try to help continue to help encourage this community and help it to flourish and grow in so many ways, not only just for us that are here now, but for our kids and just for generations to come. So after a lot of prayer and talking with some loved ones and some amazing mentors in my life that I really respect, I've decided to run for city council later this fall. So if my neighbors decide that they want me to serve, then I look forward to working alongside city council and doing what I can to help this community. So anyway, thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jeff Williams.
Good morning, council and mayor. My name's Jeff Williams, a 30-year resident of the Interlockin subdivision in Peachtree City. Can probably tell from the T-shirt, I'm a pickleball player. Been playing for four years and actually took up the game thanks to the pickleball club that taught me. And I was recovering from kidney surgery at the time, so it was a way to get active again. Yeah, I looked on the website of the council and the mayor, and it's got the five strategic pillars of Peachtree City under the tagline of uncompromised excellence. One of them is an active and healthy community, and it shows, in fact, it shows a picture of a racket sport. It's the wrong racket sport, but it does show a picture nevertheless. And just looking over the last two years, you know, there's been a SPOLOST that was overwhelmingly approved. There's been a survey. There's been a consulting project. There's been a recreational committee recommendation, and everything points to more pickleball courts. And frankly, right now, we're behind. We're way behind when it comes to pickleball and recreation and the demand. If you look, Griffin's ahead of us. Noonan's ahead of us. Carrollton, several of us went and played in a tournament in Carrollton about four or five weeks ago. Nineteen new beautiful outdoor courts. So everybody's doing it. And frankly, I'm glad there's indoor options coming to Peachtree City. I've signed up to be a member of that. But you know what? I like to play outdoors, and there's a lot of people that, for whatever reason, are not going to sign up and pay to be members of indoor courts. And we just need to take care of the population here and the growing sport that it is. Honestly, I've heard that a few people on the council are thinking about a 12-court facility. Respectfully, as I can say it, I would say, don't waste your time. Don't waste our time, and don't waste the city's money on what would be an inadequate solution, particularly if you're going to close down logheads. That's a net add of six courts. That's not going to cut it. We need a minimum of 18 courts in order to meet the demand, both to play locally, but now you can draw people to come here for date trips. You can draw people here for tournaments, which by the way, are a big revenue generator. They put people in hotel rooms. People go to the restaurants. People go to shop. It's a real win for the city. People would drive from all over the place. So we're behind, but we can catch up. And we have a trump card here that nobody else has. If you look, both within the Atlanta metro area and the state of Georgia, there is no place that has the mystique and allure that Peachtree City does. So when it comes to drawing people from all over for tournaments or just for day play, we can do it better than anybody. So I would highly encourage you, let's take action on a minimum 18-court facility and get going so that we can capitalize on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Let's hold your applause. Let's hold your applause. Next, please.
Christine Castagna.
With your 30 years, raise our children, prepare for the great place, and don't say... My name is Christine Castagna, and I've been a resident of Peachtree City for over 30 years. My husband and I have been playing pickleball for over six years. We were on the board of directors for the pickleball club for several years, and this whole time we have been fighting city council to build more public courts. Our fight began with John Rory and Mayor Fleisch, and had they had understanding or vision, Peachtree City would be ahead of the curve, as pickleball is now the fastest-growing sport in the world. You hired a survey company to take the pulse of the city's recreational needs. This company recommended 24 courts down at the Mead location. You then interviewed and handpicked a recreational advisory group who looked at the sites for the city, and they too found a location to be down near Mead Fields. 18 courts. You have two recommendations, and here you sit. By people you chose, people you paid, and Ms. Brown and Mr. Holland, you have clearly stated that you cannot support what the advisory group's recommendations are. What a waste of their time. What a waste if you are not prepared to listen. What was the point of asking? I'm going to speak to Mr. Holland, who I absolutely love and I do respect. My husband and I have seen you at the Fred. We've seen you at a funeral, and you've talked directly to us about 21 courts down at Mead. State-of-the-art lights, the whole thing. You say that, you now say that you cannot support the 18 down at Mead. I'm seeing a politician in those statements, and it's very disappointing, and I'm sorry. Ms. Brown, having been to several meetings, in my opinion, your negativity supersedes you. I ask that you listen to your constituents. Listen to the people that you ask to volunteer and support them because they did what you asked them to do. The SPOLOST was passed over two years ago, 12 lighted courts. This was voted on by the public overwhelmingly. This would give the city a total of 18 courts. That was the promise, 18, not build 12 and then take six away. Voters were told 18 courts. The rising costs that you now complain about is your fault. You sit and you wait, and the costs go up. Let me leave you with these numbers. Within a five-year period, Griffin held 28 tournaments on 18 courts. They had a participant range of 150 to 400 players on 18 courts. The county parks and recreation department, using an economic model that was developed by the state of Georgia, calculated that the benefit from these tournaments on 18 courts was $4.5 million. The model estimated hotel rooms, meals, shopping, and other spending by visitors to benefit local businesses and produce taxes for the city and county, all on 18 courts. When these courts come up for a vote, you need to keep your promise to the city. We were promised 18 courts. You need to have that vision. These courts can help pay for themselves. These courts can actually help maintain themselves, and they can help raise the city's economics. Please listen to your constituents, have a vision, keep your promise, and build the 18 courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Sue Reed.
Hi, my name is Sue Reed, and I represent all of the pickleball players of Peachtree City. As I travel around Georgia...
Excuse me, where do you live?
I live here in Peachtree City. Physical address?
No, no.
Okay. As I travel around Georgia, I am often asked, where are you from? And when I respond Peachtree City, the response is always, what a beautiful and unique place. It took courage and vision to build this great city, and it takes courage and vision to move a city forward, providing more than the bare minimum for its citizens. Can you imagine the courage and vision it took to build the miles and miles of golf cart paths here in Peachtree City? The city council, that city council, they were visionaries. Years later, the city councils that approved the Fred, the Kedron Fieldhouse, and the Aquatic Center were also visionaries and responsive to the citizens of Peachtree City who elected them. It didn't stop there. Even later councils added the BMX track, the soccer complex, and the hockey arena, again, responsive to the citizens who elected them. Would this city council have approved any of these projects? The lack of action that has been displayed in our quest for pickleball courts leaves one to only wonder. This city council will not be remembered as visionaries, but as maintainers. Just maintain the status quo. What are you afraid of? Your constituents have been asking for pickleball courts for close to six years, but you obviously do not hear us or just don't care. It's pretty hard to say that you don't hear us because we're here. So you must not care. Shame on you. Pickleball is not a seasonal sport like baseball or soccer, and it is not a venue that has performances half of the year like the Fred. It is a social sport that is played year-round. It is for all ages, including those that have retired and have found a new way to stay healthy and active. Pickleball is also a wonderful way to build community as young and old play together. It is growing and growing, and it is here to stay. Again, I ask you, what are you afraid of? Wouldn't you like to be known as the city council who was responsible for building the 18-court pickleball complex that could add economic growth to our city through tournaments and stop having our citizens spend their money in neighboring cities and counties as they travel to play on their courts? Or do you just want to stay the maintainers? Let's look to the future needs of the city and not just maintain the past. Please put aside your differences and your personal feelings and listen to your constituents and the ones that voted you into office and approve the 18 courts that we not only asked for, but that you already agreed upon. Please be our visionaries.
Thank you. Agenda changes, council?
No.
Agenda changes? No. All right, we'll move to minutes. May 8th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. May 15th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. May 15th, 2025 executive session minutes. June 5th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. June 5th, 2025 executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda items: A, fiscal year 2026 nonprofit funding Fayette County Council on Domestic Violence. B, fiscal year 2026 nonprofit funding Fayette Senior Services. C, FEMA SAFER grant cost share support. D, replacement vehicle for Stormwater Department. E, Station 85 Engineering Services. F, Planning Commission appointments. And G, resolution, public declaration of public road, and approval of easement. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And with that, I do want to point out, we just appointed Mr. Chris Jenkins, Mr. Robert Halverson, and Mr. Jack Davis as the alternate, as volunteers on our planning commission. Do we have any of those three?
Jack Allen.
Jack Allen. Jack Allen, thank you. I knew that from our interviews. Do we have any of those three gentlemen in the room with us? I just want to call them out and thank them because volunteerism is really important in Peachtree City. These three will be on our planning commission going forward. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda item, 62506 Engineering Services for Huddleston Road Path and Sewer Project. Dave Borkowski.
Yes, good morning, Dave Borkowski, city engineer. This is an exciting project because I think this is a first of its kind in Peachtree City where we're looking to combine a sewer, stormwater, and path project together. What, basically what we're wanting to build is, it was a 2017 SPOLOST project, is one part of it, is building a path down Huddleston Road from Paschal all the way up to the existing path crossing there near 54. And the other project we're looking to do is to basically sewer all the areas on Huddleston that don't have sewer, all those businesses that are on Tiger Way, Auburn Court, and other businesses in that area on Huddleston that have never had sewer. So that's a good investment opportunity there. And then there's also some stormwater issues along that corridor as well that we want to take care of. So this is an exciting new venture. And as I said, it's going to be partially funded with SPOLOST for the path and street and stormwater part of it. And then WASA is going to fund the actual sewer part of the project. The first step in something this big, basically, this is a pretty big project. We're looking at, you know, over a mile of sewer. We're looking at about half a mile of path and then stormwater things. So a project this big, we really need to get a design consultant on board with experience in this. So we sent out an RFP for design services, and we got five proposals. We had a committee of staff members and a representative of WASA review the proposals against the criteria that we had in the RFP, you know, experience and qualifications and all those sorts of things. The committee reviewed them, shortlisted two firms, and they met to discuss the shortlist and unanimously recommended RKK as the firm to do this project.
What's the name again?
RK and K.
RK and K.
The project we're anticipating is going to be a 30- to 36-month project due to the size and scope, approximately $4 million estimate. And the engineering services portion of this, we figure about $280,000 is what we're recommending the cap be for the engineering services. This represents about 7% of the construction cost for that. And that's within the range, typical range here in Georgia, you know, 7% to 12%. You know, you can go either way with those. So we're recommending that council award the contract for engineering services for this project to RK and K with a cap of $280,000. Any questions on this?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
No.
Madam Mayor, I'm certainly ready to make a motion on this.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on item 062506, Engineering Services for Huddleston Road Path and Sewer Project to the firm of RK and K, not to exceed $280,000.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thanks very much.
Thank you, David. We've been waiting a couple of years for this, so I'm glad it's finally taking its first step.
Yes, this will be an exciting project.
Public hearings, we have none. Council staff topics: Architectural Services Request for Proposals.
Yes, this is just a heads up. We had sent out another RFP for architectural services. This will be in conjunction with the 85, Station 85 project. We're wanting to get an architect to work on that here in the future as well as other future projects. So we've received a ton of RFPs back on this one, I think nine. So we're reviewing those, and the schedule is to bring this to you in July for a recommendation to award architectural services.
These architectural services are general in nature. As the projects come up, we then ask them to review the architectural?
Yes. As projects would come up, we would ask them for a task order and all that stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? We'll look forward to that. Thanks very much.
Okay. And then just a couple other things, too, I wanted to bring up. I had neglected to give our Stormwater Department kudos on some things that they had finished. The 114 Braln Stormwater Project, that we had a sinkhole next to a house. That had been completed several weeks ago. And more recently, the 37 Park Gate Detention Pond Repair has been completed as well. Even though Mother Nature tried to stop us from doing anything, they completed that project as well. So I wanted to give kudos to our Stormwater Department.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Any other council staff topics? Ms. Johnson?
I did have one. We had discussed in our retreat this year. I know some of our citizens have been frustrated because of our sign ordinance. Whenever they try to have a yard sale, sometimes their signs get picked up because signs aren't permitted. We, in an effort to help our citizens, asked our staff to make it so citizens can go online and put their information for their yard sale. And so that is now web-based, and will, if it's not already, will soon also be on that Navigate PTC app that we just got the award for today. So it's a great tool for one of my hobbies that I've always enjoyed in Peachtree City. It's a great way to get out into your community. It's a great way to get out into your community and meet other people and use things that have already been bought and so we can reuse or recycle. But thank you for the staff for doing that and I think it'll be a great tool for our citizens.
Have you used it yet?
I was looking at it last night. Yeah, I've looked at it. I haven't, I haven't gone yard sailing since it's been up, but I will. I'll take my kids.
People have been posting them on there.
I know, I saw. Yeah.
Our GIS manager, Maudee Adapala, wrote that. She coded that and she put a lot of time and energy and I think it's amazing.
Wow.
It is amazing.
Wow.
So, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Brown?
I'd like to clarify a few things with regard to pickleball.
Yes.
First of all, it's your floor. We serve in a listening capacity only during public comment and so it's okay for Ms. Brown to bring up, you know, council staff topics.
Yep. Okay, so, so when I attended the recreation advisory group meeting and realized that they did not have access to the information about a third location, which was Riley Field, where we already have parking and bathrooms and could easily add pickleball, I was upset that they were not being given that as an option. The reason it was not given to them as an option is because you can only build, presumably, 12 courts in that location, which would require doing it, having two separate courts for places where there are 12 courts, which would actually give you 24 courts.
Exactly.
Not 18, not 12, and that would certainly give us an option to take the courts at Braylon Recreation out because of the proximity to housing. The other issue with regard to Mead Field is, we as a council have to look at the cost of everything. The recreation, recreation plan recommended that pickleball be placed where the mulch pit is. It's going to cost an exorbitant amount of money to move the mulch pit and build the pickleball there. We are looking into alternative locations at Mead Field to put pickleball, but that does not happen overnight. And you have to understand that once we identify where we're going to put it, then we have to figure out, how much is it going to cost to make it happen? At Mead Field, if we put pickleball on the one baseball field that's not currently being used for baseball, then we're, we know we can put 12 courts in. We might be able to fit 18. But we have to be extremely careful how far those courts are from the residential structures in that area. That's a dispute because there's another residential complex called Clarendon Place that's going to be built on a piece of property right to the south of the mulch pit. And that's going to be townhouse structures. So we have to look at where on that vacant piece of property there's going to be housing and make sure we don't put pickleball where it's going to interfere with future as-yet unbuilt housing that's already been approved. So we're weighing all of the pros and cons of all of that. And the third and biggest issue with pickleball is funding. Yes, there's money in SPOLOST. We don't have enough money to build necessarily what everybody wants, where everybody wants it. And so we're dealing with a fixed pot of money right now and we can't just, you know, we don't have a printing press in the back room. So we have to also look at what we can build, the speed with which we can build it, how much it's going to cost and make sure that we don't take the problem that we have at Brayden Recreation and impose that on other people in other residential areas. I've had people approach me about the fact that they don't want all of the pickleball to be on the south side of the town because it's harder to get there on golf cart. And there are lots of reasons why maybe we should explore the possibility of putting some at Mead Field and some at Riley. Those are all things that we have to weigh the pros and cons of. But I'd like it if you guys would just sit back for just a minute because no matter what the recreation advisory group gives to us as far as information, the final decision is ours because we have to fund it. The recreation advisory group doesn't have to fund it. And back when the SPOLOST committee did it, they actually, it was actually not even in there. The mayor put pickleball in there and took the Battery Way bathrooms out, if I remember correctly.
No, I did not take Battery Way bathrooms out.
What came out?
Battery, nothing. Battery Way was never in there because the neighbors nearby didn't want to see a restroom go in, in that, in that location. And we didn't want to risk a perfectly reasonable $67 million SPOLOST with a handful of people who objected to one item. So no, Battery Way was never considered for SPOLOST.
So pickleball went into the SPOLOST and yes, that gives us some amount of funding. It doesn't necessarily give us the probably $2 million it would cost to put it where the recreation plan recommended that we put it. So, so we can't, we can't create money where there is no money. And so you're just going to have to give us a little bit more time while we continue to look at all of the options. I'm not looking at cutting the number of pickleball courts from 18 down to 12. In fact, the way I'd like to do it, it would be 24. But we'll stick with the 18 for now if we can do it.
No. Well, I'm with you on the 24. We can talk more about that.
Well, if 12 go in at Riley, it's really a doable thing.
All right. Any other topics? Council staff topics?
Yeah.
I'll be with you in a moment.
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Holland?
Yeah, I've got a couple of them. I'm also, want to echo what Councilman Brown said. I think it was a misunderstanding after the recreation committee that we were only in favor of 12. Actually, we were looking at 24, as Ms. Brown did say, but that just didn't come out. I can tell you that it was a matter of making sure we had the funds or had the ability to move some funds around so that we could do both locations. Well, after our city manager gave us some information, we decided that maybe 18 at that Mead Field was probably the right number and look at Riley Field a little later. But that's an opportunity for the future. I mean, now you could go from 18 down at Mead Field and another 12 up at Riley Field, but there is some costs and other issues that the city manager has to look into for funding on that. We did not want to cut it down to only 12, which was misrepresented. We were looking at other opportunities throughout the city where we could put some additional ones, not put them all down in the Mead Field area. So I wanted to just make sure I cleared that up a little bit. And that was one of the topics I wanted to talk about, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And the second one is courtesy on the cart paths. I'll tell you what, I've been here six years now, coming up on six years, and the courtesy seems to have disappeared. When I first got here, it was, everybody waved to everybody, everybody gave way. You always gave way to those who were walking and running. If you're in a cart, you let them go. They have kind of the right of way. And the rules that were put up there by Vivian, those rules are all written out very clearly. And I think we ought to include in there some, maybe something about courtesy on there. I mean, it's tough sometimes where the cart paths are relatively narrow because of the sides being collapsed in. There's barely a few inches to drive past somebody. But many times, I know, in my case, I'll pull over and stop and let the other people come through. That's not always the courtesy that I get back and they go zipping by within one inch of where you're at. Now, I'm sure everybody in this room and everybody at home listening has experienced that. I think a little bit of courtesy to each other as we say hello, give a wave, be nice to the people in the carts and particularly be nice to those that are walking, running and bicycling. That's my second comment, Madam Mayor. The third comment today is about our friend, Flat Creek Floyd. We had a wonderful time out here in City Hall, eulogizing Flat Creek Floyd. And I'm going to make a proposal because I'm the fellow who brought up public art. I think it's something that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago and offered to look at having a public art advisory group, PAAG for Peachtree City. I believe it's time for us, our city, to start to do some public art that people can enjoy as they walk, bike or golf cart ride around the city. With that idea in mind, I'd like to make a proposal to this council to donate a statue of Flat Creek Floyd and as a memorial to basically the only wild alligator we've had in this city who did no harm to any humans, probably ate some fish, maybe ate some arid beavers in the creek and has lived freely with us for over 10 years. The statue that I have in mind is about five feet long, 18 inches high, is made of concrete and is the color of alligator green. I suggest we properly honor the only mascot that I'm aware of that we've had in Peachtree City by placing him on a raised concrete platform with a small memorial sign explaining some facts about Flat Creek Floyd. Hopefully, the city, through Public Works, can construct a concrete platform and sign and mount the statue of Flat Creek Floyd at a suitable location chosen by the Public Works someplace in our city. I'd like to make sure that the council here maybe want to join together and donate this to the city to memorialize the guy who lived here for 10 years and did no harm to any of us, Flat Creek Floyd. I did, just so everybody knows what it looks like, I've got a few pictures here. I'm going to pass that down. There's one for you. And I have some for you also, what it looks like. It's, it's really not a bad opportunity to have a little bit more public art in this city. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. I know that, I know everybody's smiling, but you know...
Any other topics?
No, I have nothing else today.
All right. With that, we have no executive session and I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.